I know, me too.
We always meet.
Good evening, my name is Evan Seer and I'm going to call the Auburn Planning Board Meeting of September 10th, 2019 to order. I will begin with a roll call and we'll start at the far left.
Sam Skagen.
Dan Carroll.
Evan Seer.
Matthew Duval.
Steven Martelli.
Katie Boss.
Kyle Peppin.
And those of you that are familiar with the board will be happy to see that we are at full strength. We do have an associate member, John Engler, who was absent tonight. In addition to that, however, we have a new full member, Mr. Daniel Carroll, to my left, and to my far right, a new associate member, Mr. Kyle Peppin. So that members of the audience understand the distinction between a full and associate member. A full member is a full voting member of the board. They have full rights to make motions, second motions, and vote on motions. Associate members are afforded the rights to communicate, ask questions, be part of discussion. However, they may not make motions, second motions, or vote on motions. The first item on our agenda tonight are, would be minutes. However, we have no current print minutes available for us. It's important for people to know that you do not need to wait for the printed approved minutes in order to see what's happened at a meeting. Our meetings are live streamed on YouTube and if I remember correctly, they're uploaded within several minutes to several hours after a meeting. So they're always available at least the day after, if anyone is interested. Our first public hearing of the night is a proposed conversion of a 12,000 square foot nursing home to 12 residential units at 185 Summer Street, parcel ID 260-217 in the multifamily urban zoning district. The board conducts its public hearings as follows. We ask for a staff report. The staff proceeds with their report. The planning board then asks questions of the staff. After the planning board is done asking questions of the staff, we ask the applicant or representative of the applicant to come forward, share any additional information they may have. The board at that time may have further questions of the applicant or staff. Once the board is satisfied in asking questions or clarification of the applicant, we will then open it up to the public input section of the hearing. To the public input section of the hearing, we welcome members of the public to come forward and speak. I will remind everyone, but at that time, we would ask that you clearly state your name and address into the mic as these meetings are being recorded. When no more members of the public wish to speak, the planning board will close the public input section of the hearing. At that point, the public, the planning board will go into discussion and we may choose to make motions at that time. So, having said that, is the staff ready to present their report?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Tonight, we have a continued item from the August 13th meeting in the planning board's packet. Several items were enclosed, so I'm going to first do an overview of those and then get into the summary. You will have a supplemental staff report on 185 Summer Street based on the questions and responses to your questions and those of the community. There's responses from the applicant as well as further detail from staff regarding the questions that you had from that meeting. That is a six-page report. Next, you have a summary letter that was given to the applicants, which essentially summarized the planning board meeting and summarized the concerns of the planning board as well as a general summary of the deliberations. At that point, we met with the applicants and this was the basis for that discussion, to help them with their project. The next item you have in your packet is the original staff report for the project, which describes the project specifics in more detail. The next items you have are an Auburn parcel map showing the outlined subject property and the zoning pattern that it is within. The next item you have is an Auburn parcel map showing the comprehensive plan land use designation for the property. And the final item, I believe, is a summary of the comprehensive plan, Chapter 2 Future Land Use text designation for those items. So, in summary, this is a conversion project from a parcel that has been used probably since the 60s for various uses, but mostly as a nursing home facility. At that time, it was designated urban general or urban residential, which was a different zone than our current urban residential. And it was approved as a special exception sometime in the 70s or 80s as a nursing home facility and had been in that use more or less on and off since 1960. It was vacant and purchased by the applicants, at which time they demolished one of these structures here, which was also used as a nursing facility. This property, which was used as an office for the nursing home complex, was converted to, reverted to a duplex residential unit. And this home here is a single-family rental. This was the main structure and this is the subject of the project conversion, which is a large 16,000 square foot structure that has been added to over the decades or centuries. And we will show some photos of that as we move forward. The applicants are proposing to convert this to 12 units so that the entire property has 15 residential units on the property. The zoning designation as multifamily urban would allow that density, provided that the standards of the zone are met, which require 50% green space. However, it is a redevelopment project and that is notoriously difficult to achieve in a redevelopment project. The comprehensive plan encourages the redevelopment and refurbishment of existing structures in residential neighborhoods throughout the city, so this would be one such project. I'm going to give some brief orientation. Much of this was given to you in the packet by the applicants. Just to refresh your memory, this is the duplex, no, wait a second, is that right? Summer Street, yeah? No.
The parking lot is to the right, but I can't tell if there's a building next to that one or if that one is the, that is the two, yeah.
Yes, that's the two-bedroom, yes. I had this switched around in the staff report, which is why I was like, wait a second. So this is the duplex fronting, Summer Street. This is the conversion right here, the structure. Oops, wait a second. This is the structure from the front. You can see the extension wing here. This is the front facade with the entryway. This is the view from the other side where you can see the driveway entrance and the change in level here. This was the service entrance, I believe, for the nursing home for a back entryway. So you can see it from here through the back. This is again part of that and the property ends here at the neighboring property. This is the duplex and there is an opening here of about 15 feet between these two structures, which is fairly narrow. This is another side view, another side view showing a side entrance. The side back entrance to the neighboring property to the rear. That one is crooked. Moving right along. This shows the property at the corner, the corner entrance to the conversion, again, the conversion property. The side. The side to rear entrance. A view again from the front of the duplex. Again, the duplex to the side. This shows the paved area in the front. The parking area behind the duplex. The property on the other side of the duplex. This parking is for another multifamily unit here. This is the area that has been already disturbed from the building removal in front of the single-family that faces Turner Street. This is that small, single-family rental in front, facing Turner Street. Again, Turner Street, this is the view between the two adjoining properties. The view before this structure was removed, the view from Turner Street. The view again from Turner Street before the structure was removed. This is post-removal from Turner Street. This is the area here being proposed for parking for this project. This property will remain as a single-family rental. This will be a duplex and the proposal is for 12 units here. Another view from that, from that street. And that gives you another orientation to the project and the property itself. So in the supplemental report of this project, what I wanted to add is a summary of what the applicants addressed. The applicant has added project information from the previous submission as well as a revised site plan. I'm going to be submitting that to you now. You did receive some, one in your packet. This, I believe, is a clarification of some of the landscaping proposed on the Summer Street side. They have clarified their impervious surface coverage from calculations to show their green space calculations, roughly 23% of the total lot area. They're proposing to be landscaped and seeded. They are showing parking numbers which have reduced slightly to acknowledge the 25-foot setback required for parking from the street. They're proposing to remove two access drives onto Summer. One for the single-family here, oh wait, that's Turner. One that is currently here and a second one so that there's a consolidated entrance on Summer Street. So they will be adding landscaping. The landscaping is being proposed here to run in front of this building and then through this area. This would be the majority of the landscaped yard for the property itself. It shows 28 parking spaces and proposes two parking lot light poles for safety. Additional parking is still possible here at the side entrance where you see cars currently parked, which is not counted in the current numbers. The loading and access drive to the rear here is being proposed for the dumpster for the units, for all 15 units at this time. The applicant has also provided some trip generation estimates of roughly 18 vehicles exiting during the AM peak hours with 8 to 11 vehicles per hour entering and exiting the site between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. As you may be aware, PM peak hour travel can stagger because people run errands, et cetera, but usually AM traffic is on target, running out at the same time or less. So those numbers have been provided based on the 15 units and the potential for two potential drivers or workers and the average number of trips that are averaged for, from the ITE, which is the International Transportation Engineer's Manual for Trip Generation Calculations. It's estimated that previously the nursing home probably had similar numbers. We have heard that they had 13 employees. We've also heard in the records that they had possibly three visitors a day. But as most of these nursing facilities have visitors from nutritionists to others, physical therapy, there was likely other visitors throughout the day. But we don't have actual count numbers to know what those differences would be between the multifamily proposal and the previous nursing home facility. So, moving on. The planning board action for subdivision guidelines, those are illustrated in your staff report. And the items that I wanted to cover in a little more detail are Items 5, that will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion and unsafe conditions with respect to use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed. As I said, the applicants have conducted ITE trip calculations using the average of 6.6 trips per day per apartment unit. Using that average, the entire proposed 15 units could generate about 100 trips per day, split possibly between the two frontages. Applicants are assuming a two-car household would be the majority of likely tenants for the market rate units. Peak hour trip generation is typically spread over a two- to three-hour timeframe, reducing AM and PM trips from the classic calculation of 30 cars leaving and arriving during those hours. The averages also consider that while there may be two cars in a household, not all cars participate in peak hour travel. Existing traffic volume on Turner is very high. This was a collector that is now performing like an arterial. At the average daily traffic count is over 9,300 cars per day. If you think about it in a comparison perspective, Union Street right out here between Center and the cutoff with Minnet and the interchange is only between 72 and 8,500 for those four or five lanes. Minnet Avenue carries between 4,700 and 15,000, depending on which segment for that entire length of Minnet. And Center Street carries between 11,000 and 22,000 ADT based on street segment. So 9,300 is a heck of a lot of trips for a two-lane road with parking on the site. So that is a concern. It is also addressed in some text in the comprehensive plan regarding the operation and performance of Turner Street. We do not have numbers for Summer Street, which is considered a local street for local access to residential properties. However, the additional increase of peak hour trips would pose a fairly minimal increase in overall ambient traffic volume spread out, but the increased trips coming in and out of these roads may pose some traffic challenges. Between 2016 and 2019, more than 32 accidents occurred on Turner Street between Dennison and Rose Streets, which essentially is from this intersection to... Hello? Between this road here and... This is the property, this is the property and this is Dennison. So between Dennison and Row, there were 32 accidents. Summer Street had only seven reported accidents in the same time period within the same block segments. Strategy G26B in the comprehensive plan directly addresses Turner Street as a local corridor suitable for slowing traffic, particularly at Dennison Street, and a complete streets overhaul. So that's an area that you will need to make findings of in terms of meeting the subdivision requirements. Next of staff in the staff report, supplemental staff report is Number 9, is in conformance with a duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any. The proposed subdivision conforms to the uses allowed in the zoning designation of multifamily urban. However, as a redevelopment project, it is challenged to meet the requirements of the zone for 50% green space lot coverage. The proposed number of units does not conform to the comprehensive land use plan designation of medium-density neighborhood conservation, which would consider eight units to be the maximum allowed on-site. A general requirement for any subdivision is that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The MEDNC calls for 10 to 12 units per acre for townhouse and multifamily homes. At .71 acres, the maximum property yield would be 8.4 units. The multifamily urban zoning designation, however, allows a maximum density of 26 units per acre if the standards of the zone are met. This property could yield a maximum of 18 units at the .71 acre size if it met the 50% green space requirements. There is a discrepancy between the land use plan of eight units for the site and the zoning designation of 18. The applicant is proposing 15 units, which falls in between those two. However, other policies and development standards of the comprehensive plan encourage increased density where possible if it will not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and strongly supports the rehabilitation or redevelopment of existing structures, which this does. And I quote from the comprehensive plan, "The reuse, reconfiguration of the space within existing buildings for residential purposes should be allowed without consideration of the density, lot size requirements, provided that the building will be renovated, be compatible with the neighborhood, and meet the city's requirements for residential units, including the provision of appropriate parking and green space." I've included that text in the report. "As the project clearly meets the intent of the plan to encourage renovation, further compliance with the comprehensive plan means the project needs to be deemed compatible with the neighborhood through any variety of reduction in units, increase in green space, or any combination thereof that the planning board, that in the planning board's estimation, could be deemed in compliance with the intent of the adopted land use policies." Of other interest in the report, Number 11 of the subdivision standard requirements will not adversely affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not tend to depreciate the value of property adjoining the neighboring property under application. The subject property has been the location of a nursing home facility since 1961 and was considered illegal non-conforming use in the 70s. It was approved as a special exception in the 1980s when the facility had several buildings in office and care use and a second nursing home was in proximity. As you can see from the aerials here, the property was fairly dense with buildings and the applicant has removed this constellation right here. This was what was removed. So they have already undertaken to reduce the square footage on the site and taken these structures out, which was previously there through, I guess, the winter. The nursing home supported roughly 13 employees on-site at its peak and had an average of three visitors a day between the hours of 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM, served by 16 parking spaces, according to the property files and statements by previous owners. We do not actually have observable data, trip generation numbers, or number of visitors, or any data or facts regarding the activities on the nursing home site to show a change for the proposed use from the nursing home. Overnight staff was substantially smaller. Their parking calculations originally called for 25 parking spaces, but they, their demand for that, for that number was not justified, so they supplied 16, which served their needs. While the building pattern has not, has been in place for many years and demolition of one of the structures decreases the overall square footage on the site, the transition to 15 rental homes would generate very different impacts than the former nursing home complex. The proposed composition of units, a large duplex, a single-family home, three three-bedroom, three two-bedroom units could particularly provide rental space for families with children or larger groups of adults. While these units are greatly needed, children tend to require space to run around in and the number of people on-site could fluctuate greatly. The current composition of the surrounding residential area consists of roughly 15% single-family owner occupied homes, 35% in duplex, and 15% of the remaining neighborhood, homes in triplex and sixplex dwellings. One of the things I wanted to note is, on the other side of Turner Street, you'll notice the zoning is an urban residential, which is primarily a single-family or duplex zoning district. So in, in general, the project proposes a change of use from its more than 50-year history as a nursing home complex to a 15-unit multi-building apartment rental. As, as the project is currently presented, it does require the planning board to approve a variance to the green space standard and the specific statements by the planning board for findings on how the project complies with the comprehensive plan. Because the city has not undertaken rezoning in conformance with the adopted land use plan for this area, the existing zoning has legal standing. However, the subdivision standards require conformance with the comprehensive plan regardless of zoning. Zoning is intended to implement the comprehensive plan and consistency is required by state law. So if you make findings that the project is compatible with the neighborhood, including how and why it is compatible, and a determination regarding the amount of green space sufficient to meet the requirements and intent of the zone and land use policies, then you can find conformity with the subdivision regulations. Questions for the planning board to consider while you deliberate this project? Is the project compatible with the existing neighborhood? If you have trouble with that, meeting that standard, then what would make it so? What would need to happen to make it so? Does the project meet the standards and requirements of the zone? If not, what would be needed? Does the project warrant the variance from the requirements of the zone? If a variance is granted, does the project still meet the threshold of compliance with the comprehensive plan? Staff has provided some compatibility options that may assist as you, in your deliberations, and has offered some suggested framing because this is a complicated one that might help you pass motions to move the project forward. Staff can take questions at this time.
Just a reminder, how many units was this previously proposed?
I think it was a 30-bed facility.
No, no, I mean like when they, when they first proposed it, it was 21 units, is that right?
No.
No, it was always the same amount?
It was 12 units for the...
Primary building.
Primary building, yes.
Got it. Can you just give us a reminder why impervious surface rules exist?
They're, they serve multiple purposes, particularly for residential properties. One is for, obviously to have permeable surface to keep the distribution of green space to asphalt in urban areas at a minimum so that we can capture as much rainfall and not have runoff and flooding. The second item is obviously for human habitation so that we do have some greenery in our lives and children may have a place to go out and sit on the grass if they want to. So there's some aesthetics as well as environmental and social human.
Do you, in your opinion, do you think that the proposed amount of impervious surfaces would tax the storm water management system? would tax the storm water management system the city currently has?
The applicant is actually proposing an improvement to what was there previously by the removal of a structure and the addition of green space. Break.
Audrey, after having listened to the neighbors of that area from last month, my question is, is that to make a compromise a little bit, is it possible that we could ask to have nine apartments rather than twelve and eliminate the three, three, three bedrooms out of that building, or?
What's your question?
Can we reduce the number of apartments from twelve to nine?
What the planning board can do is make a determination of what would be deemed compatible, and what would be deemed in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance.
Trying to make a compromise with the neighborhood?
Right. So it's up to the planning board to make the determination that it meets the intent of the policies in the comprehensive plan and the intent of the zone.
So the, the answer is yes. You must justify doing so. You cannot say, "We just don't like it." Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
All right. Audrey, I have a question about density, and I, I know we met last week, and I apologize for not picking up on this then. In looking at medium-density neighborhood conservation district, I'm, I'm looking at the correct district in the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
For future, okay.
Correct.
And we saw six to eight units, and as I looked cursory, in a cursory way, I said, "Oh, there it is, first sentence, six to eight units."
For single-family and two...
For single-family.
Yeah.
And two-family homes, enough to ten to twelve units per acre for townhouse style and multifamily units.
Yes.
How, how is the calculation made for a property like this, which contains more than one type?
So in the first staff report, we use the calculations offered in the zoning ordinance, which have square footage requirements for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily, and created an average calculation. Because this is a, a combination of different types of units, what staff has done previously is just use the first five thousand square foot threshold to, to calculate the additional fifteen hundred square feet per dwelling unit, to arrive at a number that would enable this density under the multifamily urban.
And what, what would the, using those calculations, remind me again, I apologize, what would be the density that would meet the requirement of the comprehensive plan?
Given the point-seven-one acres, we would generally state, in this case, multifamily, we would just use the townhouse or multifamily and calculate the maximum of twelve units per acre times point-seven-one, which is point-seven-one acres, if it's less than an acre, which gives you the yield of eight-point-four units for the property.
Additionally, I have a question about the site plan we received tonight with the plantings. Does staff know? I am looking at the north-northwest boundary, and I am looking at the, the north-northwest boundary that intersects with Turner Street, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there appear to be nine maple trees along the property line. Are those trees currently there? I mean, it doesn't look like it here, but they might be small.
No, they're proposing plantings. They're proposing some landscaping and plantings.
Okay, so these, these are proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I wanted to add, in fact, I, I'm sorry I didn't do this earlier, I wanted to add a couple of final items to my report. We, I'm going to distribute this. The applicants, on August nineteenth, submitted this letter to their neighbors, so they submitted this letter essentially introducing themselves and talking about their project, and giving them their contact information and information and encouraging them to call or to discuss the, any questions or concerns they may have with, with the applicants. So I wanted to include this and give you the, the information that they have been in touch and communicated with their neighbors in regards to the project and solicited input or questions and information from them. In addition, today, we received at around nine-thirty this morning, a letter from, from neighbors as a, in regards to the project, and you can consider this as you hear testimony. It was signed by eleven property owners in the vicinity, giving their, their thoughts and suggestions for moving the project forward for compatibility.
Are there copies available for the, for the public?
Yes.
Okay.
And Audrey, the letter that was sent out to neighbors by La Valley Properties, was that to abutters, or what was the radius of neighbors that were included in this mailing?
I believe it was not only to near neighbors, but we may, the applicants can certainly be asked that question as well.
I have a, as, as people review this, I have an additional question. We are hearing the proposal of two light posts in the parking area, and those, when I heard that, sort of struck me. I don't recall a parking lot of this size that we have seen with light posts, so can staff speak to, because there are some projects that do not come before the board, because they don't meet their threshold. I mean, other similar projects, those projects that don't come before the board, is that regular practice to put that type of lighting in parking of this type?
The, the current ordinance does not stipulate requirements. It does not have lighting standards, period, for the city, in terms of height, like, except to say, downcast lighting to make sure you're not overlapping with neighboring properties. We don't have anything that says you can't have poles, or this number of poles per parking space. It is simply a situation-by-situation circumstance, and in a neighborhood where you do have nighttime lighting by city lights on the streets, it's mostly at the discretion of security of the property owner.
Okay. I want to be, I'm, I'm looking at the, the most recent site plan here. Are they proposing removing all of the entrances on Summer Street?
No.
So that would be the primary entrance?
They have one primary entrance on Summer Street.
And then, and then Turner Street would not have an entrance, or?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the, yes, they'd have the, the service entrance and the main entrance.
So that, in that, so the service entrance and main entrance would be on Summer Street?
Yeah, the service entrance, yeah, where the dumpster's going to be is on Summer Street.
I'm, I'm just curious, and, you know, maybe the applicant can, can talk more about this, why the landscaping didn't extend the entire way across Turner Street. I see, again, more trees, like Mr. Seer pointed out, but they don't extend the entire way across the Turner Street side, and that seemed to be one of the major concerns of the abutters, which...
Actually, I think...
There's a curb cut on...
It is, it is somewhat confusing. There's a curb cut here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this property is the abutter, so sort of there, property ends.
Talking about this one right here.
So that's the curb cut, and then as you go, this right here is sort of the corner. So like this, that we're seeing here is...
So there would be an entrance on Turner Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, that was a question.
So you want to funnel all the traffic between those two buildings onto Summer Street?
No, I think the question was, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chicago was saying that he, he missed that there was a curb cut on Turner Street, and was wondering why there was a blank space in the planting. Am I...
Yeah.
The curb coat would be for the house that was taken down.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
So it'd probably be about right here, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then this, this would be gone, so there would be something here-ish.
But again, the primary entrance and exit out of this property would be on Summer Street?
I think, given the fact that there's a fifteen-foot distance here between these two buildings, which is really only sufficient for one-way traffic...
Sure.
Given the concrete wall on either side, you'd probably have folks entering and parking here where there's a few spaces, but the majority would be coming in and out of turn.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going with that. That's, okay.
So we, we already know that the project exceeds the density for the comprehensive plan, but not for zoning. I hope the board picked up on that, though, that the comprehensive plan sort of carries in this case, because it's a subdivision, all right? So, so there's a density issue, there's an impervious surface issue. Do you know, has your department had a chance to review any permits, or has code enforcement been able to be in the building? Are there any, are there any concerns about particular units within the building that we might, that, that we might look at as saying, if this is possibly going to be a problem already, we may look at creating a reduction in density? Has, has, has that happened at all in the, in the planning department?
We have a, a set of drawings that a building official has. We have reviewed those. It appears that they're proposing two units in the basement that are studio apartments, smaller in size, two-forty and six-forty. The, the problem there is an egress issue from a safety perspective. They require a window, an escape route directly to the living space, or the, the living space bedroom. And let me just make you dizzy by showing you what we're talking about. So, so essentially, you see where this window is here? This would be the basement unit, down here, I believe. So there is an egress issue. They would have to create a well and create a window that would be sufficient for someone to escape from if there was a problem or a collapse or an emergency.
So they would have to excavate, cut into the foundation?
They'd have to cut that out, and so that would be the, the concern for egress at this juncture.
And is that the only unit that sort of looked like it would be? Were there any other, other, the, the other unit in the basement, did it also have an egress issue?
It is the same, it's the same setup, only on the other side.
Okay.
Don't look at that one, it will make you dizzy, but I think it is on this side, over here, in the same, you know, it's the same foundation.
Okay. All right. So we're, so we're already looking at a project. If, if, if left as is, we're looking at a project that is, is, is too high in, in density, too much impervious space, but also includes two units that are possibly in, I mean, I hate to, the code enforcement officer isn't here, but if he's raised concerns, I mean, in looking at the pictures...
They could restructure it to make it work.
Okay, it, it could, it could work, so how many parking, were, were they talking, two parking spaces per unit?
Yes.
So a reduction in two units could potentially yield four parking spaces worth of green space?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, okay. Okay. Are there other questions for the, for the staff?
Well, just for clarification, we're saying that in order for this building to be in line with the comprehensive plan, that it would need to be eight-point-four units based on the calculation?
No.
Can you clarify what that number was?
That's not the only, yeah, that's not the only standard by which you would be measuring compatibility with a comprehensive plan. You also have the clause that states that the planning board is given discretion to increase the density and ignore some of the standards for the zone if it is meeting the purpose of rehabbing and redeveloping an existing building. So that is actually, that is the case here, which is why that paragraph is pulled out. That is a policy and goal within the comprehensive plan to redevelop these properties.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but another one of the goals is to create more density of housing, period.
As long as it is compatible and not negatively impacting the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So those were really your, your fundamental questions.
Do we know how long this building, was this building vacant? I, I understand that the duplex and the single-family home were occupied, but...
Couple of years.
So the applicant could probably answer those questions better than I can.
Okay, all right, okay.
One more question that I have is, what are the elements of compatibility?
Correct. So essentially, when you read the language of the comprehensive plan, it is specific to saying, you know, "Go forward, do great things, just make sure, you know, things are compatible." So it's in your estimation to, to make that, those findings.
But there aren't any clear standards for what it means to be compatible?
For compatibility.
No, that's one of them.
That's an intangible, that's...
We have to take that one on and own it, yeah, so.
So you would, you would need to be specific. You may find that the building has been in existence, this has been in the neighborhood for fifty years, it is, the form is compatible, the use is, is consistent with residential uses, and it meets the standards, or it is multifamily, it's urban, it's made for redevelopment. So you can make those findings that bring it, in your estimation, in compatibility with the comprehensive plan.
Are there any additional questions? Seeing no additional questions for staff, at this time, we'd like to invite the applicant forward to provide any clarification. You can speak to some of the things we've been discussing, add any information that you'd like to add. We would ask that, because the meetings are being recorded, you just state your name into the microphone before you begin. Thank you.
And I'm going to distribute this at the request of the applicant. It is their standard lease agreements, which speaks to the type of tenants they are looking for and how they manage their properties.
Thank you.
Al La Valley. Al La Valley Properties.
Kristi La Valley.
I guess the first thing that I guess I would say is, in general, we're looking for, we're trying to market this as apartments for professionals that go to work every day, they're respectful and responsible. We don't accept, accept section eight in any of our properties. We don't allow pets in our properties. Smoking is prohibited inside our buildings, and, and we do enforce that. We have evicted people for refusing to yield to that. We don't allow any illegal substances, as defined by federal law. We don't, do not allow unregistered vehicles on our property, and we do screen our potential tenants. We look at their credit score and history, we look to make sure they don't have any wants or warrants, we verify they're not a sex offender, we check their references and check their employment. I mean, I, I would further say that this, this building is nicely suited to be apartments. I mean, it has a serviceable, serviceable elevator, and it's fully sprinkled. It also has a central fire alarm system, and our plans for this property was to expand that system. We have been talking with the, the city staff, and we have discussed making the exit from the parking lot onto Turner Street a right turn only to help alleviate traffic congestion. We've also discussed eliminating the two units in the basement from our plan, making it a, a ten-unit building. Further reduction of apartment units in the building will only increase the apartment size. The building is existing. If we don't break it up as much, we probably will attract a little different client. As Audrey said, we did send out letters to all the abutters, and I included people who lived across the street, so there, I think there was a total of eleven letters sent out between the people on Summer Street and Turner Street. And as far as the building being occupied, we were told at the time of auction, and it was auctioned in December of last year, that the last patient left the last week of November. of November. Other than that, I, I don't know exactly what, what occurred. You know, it was in January before we actually were able to have the transfer of the property.
The other building had been moved.
Oh, and I would also say that the building that we removed had been emptied for at least 20 years. It was just basically being used as a storage. It wasn't heated, and the building was in a sad state of disrepair. As far as the lights in the parking lot, I basically put those in. I am not, I have not really spent a lot of time in the dark hours there, just to see what's there for, for ambient lighting. But I do want our residents to feel safe, you know, coming and going into the apartments. Anything you would like to say?
Well, I mean, we sent 11 letters out. We got one phone call out of the 11, which we, he asked us what we were doing, and we explained what, what we were doing, and he seemed, you know, content with it. I know that the big concern of the tenant, you know, the people across the street, since those are, you know, a different zoning, and they're zoned for single-family homes, that, you know, the traffic, I mean, unfortunately, Turner Street is what it is. I can't change that, you know. But like I said, if we do less units, it's still 12,000 square feet. So, if you have six units, they're just going to be bigger. They're going to have more bedrooms, you know, so, versus having, you know, the smaller, it's going to be the same amount of parking, honestly, either way. You're just going to get different clientele, where, where you may have, like, a, a daughter living with her mother, living with a grandmother, you know, and, and so you'll have, you know, multifamilies probably trying to live in one apartment versus, you know, the single-family apartments that we, you know, intend.
So, may I ask a question with regard to that?
Yes.
If, if the, if the planning board were to entertain the idea of, of limiting the units in the basement, would that's, I would think that that wouldn't, that would have an impact on parking spaces, whereas if we were to limit upstairs, I hear what you're saying, you might, you might have additional three-bedroom units, or you might even have, well, I would think three-bedroom units would, four-bedroom units are, maybe more three-bedroom units. So, so if a reduction upstairs in units wouldn't, wouldn't reduce parking, but do you feel that-
We did already take out two parking spaces to give more green space in the front.
25-foot setback.
To give a 25-foot setback and more, you know, green space in the front. So, we kind of already eliminated two parking spaces for one of the units. So, if, you know, like we talked about eliminating two units, it would be another two spots.
Okay.
You know, and we're, our purpose is to keep the people from parking on Summer Street. We already own a building on Turner Street. We know what happens, you know. We have six parking spaces for three units in that building. When there's an extra car, they park on Summer Street. I mean, and we're trying to eliminate, you know, more congestion on Summer Street, because there currently is already a lot. You know, one thing, you know, reading the code, it basically talks about, you know, rehabbing houses, you know, and having more density, you know, as opposed to, you know, building new ones and that kind of thing, which is what we're trying to do. Our plan is to keep, you know, the buildings, their existing footprint. They will just be refreshed, you know, kind of thing. And we won't be changing the outside looks, other than refreshing them, which is what we've been doing. I mean, these buildings all were leaking inside. They all had, you know, holes in roofs, mold in them. The one we tore down was full of rodents. I mean, it was really bad. And all we've been trying to do is basically, you know, remodel them, get them back up to where they need to be, and, you know, suitable for living again. I mean, you can imagine the toll of a building sitting there for 30 years, empty.
To your point about the existing trees, if you look on the existing plan, it shows the trees that are existing. There are a couple beside 197, 197 Summer Street, and there's one right by 288 Turner Street.
Okay, I see here. Yep, and then, so, it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, well, nine, but I want, eight along the property line that would be additional trees.
Right.
Can I ask a question about the trees? So, maples are sort of not a landscaping element that we see often. I appreciated it, because I think maples are a pretty tree. Normally, when we see that sort of planting, it's being done in an effort to create screening. Was there a reason that you guys chose to go with maple trees versus a screening evergreen, like an Arbor Vidae, or something like that?
Yes. The existing trees there are all maple.
Okay, so-
I was just trying to keep it the same.
Okay.
You know, and we tried to, tried to talk to the abutting neighbor, but I guess he doesn't live there, and we, all the phone numbers on the city records, none of them worked. And, you know, I mean, we don't have a preference over which trees they are, or if there's a fence versus trees. I mean, honestly, you know, whatever they would like, you know, to help, you know, the aesthetics.
Well, I assume the number of tree, the number of trees sort of indicates to me is that, that it's, it's meant to be a clear boundary sort of demarcation, because there's-
I was trying to make it as forest-like as I could.
Okay, all right. So, the intent, the intent was more to give sort of tree plantings that were similar to what you're already seeing on the property, and-
We were just trying to keep consistency and give, you know, the neighbors more what they wanted of, in the last meeting, more vegetation.
Okay.
One question I have is, you know, we did receive a copy of their letter. Are we going to have a chance to afterwards, after they speak, to rebut them, or should we go ahead and do it now?
I would say that it would be appropriate to wait until after. Even though you're the applicant, you're more than welcome to come up and speak during the public input section of, of the hearing.
Okay.
And I think that it would be helpful for the board to first hear from the, the author of the letter, before we, we start to hear any rebuttal.
Just to clarify on the, the streets, because there seems to be some confusion based on, there was a couple mistakes in this letter that Audrey had submitted. On the driveways, there currently are two driveways on Turner Street that will be removed, and we will have one driveway on Turner Street.
So, you're going from one, two, three, four, five curb cuts to...
Three.
Like, total, on, okay.
Right. On total, it would be three.
Total, okay, okay.
There's currently-
One on Turner, two on Summer. Is that correct? One on Turner, and then two on Summer?
Well, well, currently, there's two on Turner and two on Summer.
Currently, there's four, and there will be three.
Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying. So, the curb cut that's here doesn't currently exist. You're moving to-
Correct.
But you're making one, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify.
The other, the other point I would make, too, is, is in discussion with city staff and, and kind of our own feeling, we feel like it would be dangerous to have two-way traffic between the two buildings, 197 and 185 Summer Street. There's only roughly 15 feet between them. You know, by the standards of drive entrances, it should be 20 feet. Plus, with the, there's, you know, an, an exit from 197 Summer Street that enters right into that area, and also from the nursing home building that would enter right into that area as well.
We just feel like it's not safe to bring all the traffic, you know, between-
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I was not trying to-
No, I know, I just-
It should be. I'm trying to get a handle on-
Right, we just wanted to clarify of why we chose to have the entrance on Turner Street, because we know that's a big contention.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it makes sense. It would be dangerous to funnel-
Yeah, I mean, the people are walking right out, you know, to that area. So, it's just not really safe to have people walking right where you're driving. All the cars are coming through.
Right. And we, we kind of would like to keep that open for snow removal, but we're thinking we may want to put a post or something in it that could be removed, you know, when that, when you need to remove snow, just so you don't get any through traffic.
We don't, yeah, we don't want people just cutting through the property, just because it's easier also, you know. So, we talked about that. But we do need it kind of open for the snow removal.
At, at this time, do you feel comfortable taking additional questions from other members?
Sure.
Are there questions for the applicant from the board?
I had a question regarding the letter, but I think I'll wait till if the public has-
Okay.
They might answer the concern I have of, you know, that they brought up in the letter.
So, you, I brought up the light posts earlier. I assume that these would be motion-detected lights, so these would not be on all night?
Right.
And did, was there a reason that you felt it was more appropriate, or, I guess more appropriate to do light poles versus cutoff lighting on the building?
I just didn't feel like the lights, any lights on the building would cover the entire parking lot.
Okay. It, I guess I haven't paid atten, I drive on Turner and Summer all the time, but I guess I haven't paid attention. To your recollection, do you know if there, because these, these roads all have street lighting. Are, are there any street light posts sort of adjacent to this property that, that you remember?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I, I may ask the same question of neighbors.
Right.
It's, it's like, unless staff happens to know, but, oh, okay.
The problem with the lights on the building is we feel like they shine on the neighbors more than a, you know, a light pole that was pointing down. Because there currently are lights on the building, but they kind of, you know, it's, because they have to shine out for the parking lot. So, that's why we felt like a light pole would be better to shine straight down.
Yeah. Well, yeah, as it turns out, if you, if there were lights on the building, we would absolutely require them to be full cutoff anyway. So, you would, you know, you, you're right in, in thinking that you wouldn't have that sort of cutting across the parking And I'm also looking, the curb cut on Summer Street is, is quite large, especially if I'm, I'm processing, as I'm, as I'm here, you guys discussing. So, one, two, three, four, five, we're looking at five parking spaces. If you were to create a situation where there was no real throughway available, we would expect really to just be seeing those five cars coming back and forth. Is there any particular reason you chose to leave the curb cut that size, instead of possibly extend it to increase possible green space, or?
No, we, we had some discussion about that earlier. Basically, most of our focus with a street entrance was on Turner Street.
On Turner, providing a, an entrance on Turner.
But I'm not opposed to anything over there.
Okay. And thinking, while I have you in the front, thinking back to the last meeting, if I remember correctly, some of the concerns from the abutters were certainly around their perception of compatibility with regard to the number of people, but also to aesthetic. And I sort of am looking to the, the plantings, and again, I was excited to, to see maples. I like them. I have them in my front yard. I think they're beautiful trees. Had you considered using something that was perhaps more of a, a screening-type vegetation to sort of break up the visual, so, when you're on Turner Street and you look through the property, you really can sort of like look through the property, which, which I understand really is a little bit different from some of the abutters. Had you considered doing any sort of shrubbery, or-
We're not opposed to, to shrubbery. I mean, like I said, that's part of the reasons why we sent the letters out, hoping to get some feedback on what they would like to see. And unfortunately, we weren't able to do that.
All right, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any, oh-
Just one more quick question. For the two units that are in, in the basement, are they already existing, or would they be part of a build-out for?
They're, they're existing. They were used as a conference room, a training room, and laundry for the nursing home.
So, you would have to retrofit them to be units?
Right. That's correct.
Correct. Thank you. The other thing I would also add is, there is, you know, onsite laundry in this building. So, they wouldn't, you know, that would eliminate some of the trips, because they wouldn't have to be going out to do laundry. They could go right in the basement and do laundry, you know. And if this was, you know, a, a single building on a piece of property that it technically should be, not three buildings or four buildings on a piece of property, I mean, we would be within the unit count, you know, at that time, for the 10 and 12. But due to the fact that sometime in the, you know, past, you know, time-
Yeah.
They merged four properties onto one with four buildings.
Well, it is not, it is not uncommon, actually, in our downtown and sort of surrounding areas, to see several buildings on a single lot. So, that's definitely not a, a unique issue. It's something that we've, we've seen before. So, we can understand some of the challenges. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. At this time, I'd be looking for a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
An emotion to my left is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor? We've now opened the public input section of the, the hearing. Please come forward, state your name and address before you begin. Thank you.
Happy to.
I believe you have before you this letter in itself. And if you could flip up, please, Audrey, that view from Turner Street that you had up there. And, see, it's a big parking lot area. Nope. There's a number here. I know it. There it is. That's the one right there. I'm Kathy Turbine. I'm from 393 Turner Street, which is pretty much directly across from this proposed project. And I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, the lady and gentlemen, and attendees, of course, staff, to please consider the neighborhood impact of this project, and especially on the six houses surrounding the back of the project site on Turner Street, and the two houses on either side of the project seat, site. So, we're looking at six, mainly six houses that really face this particular picture as we see it. And we have some concerns, and then we have some recommendations. So, hopefully, those will be there. For the additional project information, we went through the report that you had, the latest one, I believe, Audrey, that I picked up from you. And we had not seen the new project submission that has just asked for the entry and exit, I believe, on Turner Street. So, our assumption with these two was we assumed access to and from the project would perhaps be on Summer Street, with Turner Street providing no access to the project. I see that has changed, and that was Section 2. We're not really excited about looking at the parking lot, much less having the traffic go in and out. And I think we could address that later through some other members. As to noise pollution, this is Section 3.1. We've already discussed how quiet the neighborhood was with a dead building there for 30 years, and that we were concerned with not knowing the type of job activities of the renters, nor the quality of the renters that were there, that it would turn into 24-hour urban noise in a very peaceful neighborhood. So, our recommendation was going along with many of the things that you suggested, was noise suppression to be achieved with possibly fencing, trees, bushes, landscaping, and that it be maintained, for, in whatever reason, for our view, because right now, it's, it's not great. Okay. The second was in Section 3.5, and this is, quote, "will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of the highway or public roads existing or proposed." And our statement basically was calculations are a guess without knowing exactly who's going to inhabit, and that trip generation, really from the nursing home with 13 staff and three visitors, will never be exactly the same as the units that are proposed in this situation. And that if this project ever went just in and out of Summer Street, it would impose a great deal of pressure on both Rose Street and Dennison Street, which, Rose Street not being in any kind of condition to handle a lot of traffic that would directly be coming out of Summer. We were concerned about poor walking conditions, children crossing the street, and if- and if, um, you look at the Row Street and you decide not to do the Turner Street exit, then that area is probably going to have to be addressed with a crosswalk and everything else that goes with it. We concerned, are concerned there'll be more all-day traffic, and we believe the accidents are going to increase. Our little section between Dennison and Row Street, 32 accidents is a lot of accidents in one little section. So, um, our concern was really, is the entry and access from Turner Street really a wise situation, unless we can figure out a way to control that? I mean, we hear it, we see it, we get blocked by it. And with the increase of traffic in and out of Turner Street, regardless of how it goes in or how it comes out, we were hoping that maybe you would consider some other traffic pattern that may be entry only in by Turner or exit only from Turner, and probably you've discussed those things. But that's basically our issues. So our recommendations were, um, a traffic accident evaluation study be performed specifically at the Road-Turner Street corner, because we do believe there is a lot of accidents, according to the neighbors there. If there's reconstruction of that street, consideration of speed bumps and a crosswalk to accommodate children coming and going if they use that route to school. The, um, proposed plan under Section 38 aesthetically addresses Summer Street, but it really doesn't totally address our Turner Street. And, um, we are in a different zone, right now you sort of saw what we were facing. And, um, all of us have invested in our properties, I don't know if any of you have walked down our side of Turner Street, but you'll see a great deal of investment landscaping care. We're very concerned about our land values. We have put a lot of times the people who have signed, um, this particular letter that our owners have been residents there between 27 and three years. Some have completely revamped their houses, and we're very proud of that. So our anxiety really sits with what are we going to be facing, and what is going to happen to our land values? So, um, we believe that an undue adverse effect on the scenic and natural beauty of the area, quote, will be affected. And, um, the view as it stands is really, unless it is maintained in some way and done in some way, it's just not acceptable. We're in a different zone, and, um, most of your activities and comments have been about the neighborhood in Summer Street, which is urban and, um, medium residential. So our recommendation is whatever is finally put in place should mirror and blend in and complement the existing beauty of the surrounding area of Turner Street, maybe a fence on the Turner Street side, et cetera, but also possibly a fence facing, um, 396, which is, um, the gentleman that's right next door to the property. Because right now, um, there's just an empty space that goes right into his yard. And it was blocked before by the building and the plants that were there. Okay, um, the continued, we already spoke about that. Section 39 was a proposed number of units years ago was waived and granted for the nursing home, and that was when Auburn was quite a sister town to Lewiston, and the north end of Turner Street was simply a mall and a farm. Things have changed, as you know, with all of the stuff there. So we, our concern is by allowing more than eight units on the site at this time places an additional burden for surrounding properties to make up and absorb the issues that go beyond the common sense eight-unit limit. Noise and many of the things that have already been discussed, that I think you understand. By maintaining a limit of eight units, we would agree that we would have less parking, more green space, less actual, um, exposure to the comings and go of that and the noise. Another concern, um, which we were assured, that's in here about flipping, has already been clarified by the people who plan to do this. They do live in Auburn and are saying they will maintain a higher standard of people who will live there. Our recommendation, though, is a 50% green space required with eight units for the comprehensive land use project requirements, and that it should not receive a variance. Okay? For Section, uh, number three, 11 and 12, as stated, it only addresses Summer Street, and we've already addressed that in our other comments. As far as Section 60 dash 1365, we oppose any waivers to the comprehensive plan. And under possible considerations, we're strongly in favor of two to four considerations, but we're still against number one, which is the comprehensive plan waiver. So, um, this is submitted for the owners of residence at 369, 377, 393, 396, and 401 Turner Street, which surround this particular place. Thank you. Want to entertain questions? I think we've said it all. Well, just for me? You guys gotta do it, okay? Sorry.
Thank you.
Gotcha! Thanks, Bill.
Good job. Good evening again, thank you for your service. My name's Bill Horton, I'm the owner of 401 Turner Street, um, Auburn, Maine. And so, um, I, I truly appreciate the conversation between you guys, and I listen to it intently, because I truly heard this week, different than I heard last time, is that you guys really heard us, and you're considering what's best for the neighborhood. I think the first thing I want to say is the two people that were here seem to be very nice people, but this is a business to them. So the difference between them and us is we live there. This is our neighborhood, and this is their business they want to bring to our neighborhood. And so they're nice people, I, I take them at their word. I think they're going to rent to nice people as best they can, um, but it's a business. You guys received the plot plan changes the same time we did. So we went to the city, Kathy went to the city and got the information from the, um, the planning board folks, and it showed in the plot plan that there was no curb cut on Turner Street. And so we wrote the letter, intently looking at it, saying, okay, they're not... We can't argue they're going to dump a lot of people on Turner Street, but they're going to bring people to Row Street, and if you, if you travel Row, Row's not in the great, greatest shape. It's narrow, um, it's got a telephone pole right in the corner, and if, and if you ever come off Summer trying to go to Turner, and you want to turn to go to Walmart, it's a tricky situation, especially if someone's trying to pull in as you're trying to pull out. The things you guys referenced that I think we all need to take into consideration is exactly the things you talked about, which is the density and the amount of people you want to bring to this property. I did a rough calculation, if you leave it the way it is, it's 20 people that are going to come live on this parcel of property. And that's a lot of people to live in, in a small piece of property and bring vehicles to it. One of the pictures that you guys scroll through showed a basketball hoop right on the property already. So there's already kids living, living in some of these buildings. And if you don't give kids a place to play and, on their property, it, it's going to be difficult. If you bring up the picture of 401 Turner, I'm going to have more grass on my single-family home than this property's going to have with 20 people living on it. So where do you barbecue, where do you, where do you do those kinds of things? And so, green space is important to this, this neighborhood. You talked about the impervious surface, I didn't see on the plot plan any drainage. So whatever drainage is going to be is going to roll off the curb into the city sewers. And so, either they're going to tie into the city sewer with an agreement, or it's just going to roll off the street to the city sewer. Somebody mentioned along the way, you know, snow! So if you allow them to put this many people on the property with this many parking spaces, how do you deal with the snow in your driveway? How are you going to deal with the snow, and how many parking spaces will be lost when we get a foot of snow in, all winter long? So whatever number of spaces you count that are available may be less than that for the five months we all live here in Maine for winter. You guys used the term compatibility. You cannot reasonably go in walking distance unless you go to Washburn and find a place that holds as many cars as this place is proposing. So if you go to Turner Street and walk north to Walmart, you will not find a place that will have 20 parking spaces between here and Walmart. If you turn the corner, you will have to go all the way to the funeral home to find another place that will have 20 parking spaces. So compatibility, if that's a threshold for you guys to consider, compatibility, that, I'm not sure how you meet that compatibility. I was very interested to hear that 9,000 cars go up and down Turner Street. 9,000 cars. I remember when you guys were talking about their property on Washington Ave, and you were talking about how they wanted to have a curb cut on Washington Ave, and there wasn't enough distance on Washington Ave because of the speed of traffic, and it's a two-lane highway, and you wanted 200 feet for a curb cut for distance. Turner Street, cars move faster than, it's posted 35, um, it's posted 25. I call the police quite often if I'm on vacation outside mowing my grass, because I remember I used to call Phil Howell personally and say, "Phil, can you send somebody down to go sit on Row Street for a couple hours?" And they'd come down and stop a half a dozen cars, because traffic moves on Turner Street. I mentioned the picture of the basketball hoop. I'm not sure what you're going to do with how cars get in and out of this, this, this location. I sit here, I believe you guys are going to grant them something for this property. I, I believe that's an obligation you have by our policies that repurposing this property is your charged responsibility. And I understand that. So I'm not here saying that you're not going to grant them the ability to put some apartments in this building. That's going to happen. But I think the conversation about how many apartments, how many cars you're going to allow to come to this property is a huge consideration for the neighborhood. And so we do have a lot of six units around. I could, you can walk from this property and, in several hundred feet in both directions and find several six units. There's one on the corner of Row and Turner, and they have a very small parking lot. There's already properties on Summer Street that don't have enough parking, and that's why there's so much parking on the streets. And so I appreciate they're going to have a parking lot, um, but I don't appreciate that it's across from my house, and I would have to look at it. The other threshold you guys have to put into your criteria is that the actions and decisions of this group will not diminish the property values in the, in the area. And I can sit here and say, "Oh, my property value, my property value." But in good faith, in reality, is that, um, Kathy's house is right across the street from a parking lot, is going to have diminished value. I'm one stru... I'm one house up, um, you know, I'm a little further away from it, but I'm still going to have to look at it. I don't think whether that criteria, you can pass that criteria by saying it will not diminish the value of property. It doesn't say diminish property value by a percentage, it's diminish property value. So if anybody's property value is down by $1, then you've not missed that threshold. I'm in agreement, the ugly old building's gone, and I'm appreciative of that. But I also think I'd be appreciative of knowing what's going to be across the street. I'll personally tell you, I never knew this was four buildings on a single property. I always thought that that, that old building eventually would be sold to somebody that would come and build a house there. I did not understand that that was tied to the nursing home. And then I think the green space, I think Kathy hit, hit the, uh, the nail on the head, is that, um, if these guys had, you know, 40% of the green space, but I think the final number in the, the drawing was 22%, 23% green space. So if you grant them a waiver, you're not granting them a waiver that they needed 50%, and they only had 45 or 46, and you could pass the straight-face test. You're completely throwing that regulation out the door and saying that 22% green space is the appropriate amount of space. And I think that's just a little too far off the mark. So diminished value, not enough green space, um, too high a density for the type of, for the location and the property and how it's currently configured. Kathy mentioned the accidents, I, I don't think you can put another curb cut on Turner Street and not say there's not going to be an associated accidents related to that, not for the density of cars coming out of there. So, again, I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening to us, and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board during the...
Hello, my name's Matt Harris, I'm the owner of 369 Turner Street, kind of diagonal from that picture that was up there earlier from Kathy's thing. And I, uh, I have a few concerns that have been addressed already, but again, going back to the curb cut on Turner Street. I mean, I was blown away at the fact that 9,000 cars drive by that, on that section of road. Since I've owned the house for three years, I must have had to call the police department or 911 probably two dozen times for motor vehicle accidents. About a month and a half ago, the, the neighbor directly, I don't know what number it is, but they ordered pizza. The pizza delivery lady actually got rear-ended very badly, taken to the hospital, because the driver was not paying attention. She stopped to take turn into their driveway, coming up Turner Street toward, uh, Walmart, and caused a major accident out in front of the house. Two days later, same stretch of road, not even 50 feet down the road, another rear-end accident, somebody turning left onto Lake Auburn Ave. Saturday night, early in the morning, uh, right up near, I believe it's Row Street, we had an accident. Somebody slammed into a telephone pole not paying attention. My recommendation would be, honestly, I understand that the 15 feet between the buildings, but I think it should be entrance from, uh, Summer Street, exit out onto Turner Street. If you do the exit out onto Turner Street, you'll have a clear view both left and right for oncoming traffic, day, night, and you wouldn't be stopping traffic in motion on Turner Street. You'd reduce the possible accidents going onto the street. I'm also concerned with if there is going to be children in the house. Obviously, they're going to be probably attending Washburn Elementary School. There is no crosswalk on Turner Street, crossing from one side to the other side, going toward Washburn School, other than down at Dennison Avenue. And the reality of the situation is nobody's going to walk down to Dennison Street, to cross the street to walk all the way back up. So I think it should be somewhere that needs to be considered, that if we, they need to put a crosswalk in at the Lake Auburn side, crossing Turner Street, um, to help with the ease of pedestrian traffic. I was not aware that there's going to be lights on the property. I am kind of concerned, I do have questions about, you know, these light poles and how high they're going to be, and what additional lights are going to be on during the evening. I would personally rather see, like, light posts, maybe, you know, five or six feet high with, I don't want to say low-voltage lighting, but something a little bit dimmer, I get it, that, you know, they need to have lighting at night for security purposes, but I don't think it needs to be something like you see at Walmart's parking lot or, you know, Denny's parking lot or something like that. And then I am, I have firefighting experience, so learning that there's going to be some apartments in the basement, kind of concerned about that. I do kind of like the idea of maybe removing those two to increase the green space on that. You know, as it comes to the green space, I would, I agree, I like oak trees, I think they're great, but I'd rather see something that's more low to the ground, that would be more aesthetically pleasing and reduce the amount of noise coming off the property with that. So, that's all I have for concerns.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to come speak during this section of the hearing?
My name's Craig Woodard, I live at 393 Turner Street. And, uh, they pretty much hit all the major issues, but I just wanted to, uh, talk about a couple. One is the previous, um, um, allowance that was made so that they could put a nursing home in there, was done, what, 40, 50 years ago? The section of town is different than it was then. And as was said before, it was farmland and maybe the Auburn Mall there at the other end. Back then, the traffic used to come from Lewiston over to the mall. Now, I, I mean, uh, yeah, and then... Now, I mean, yeah, and then other than that, all the traffic in town basically went over to Lewiston to shop. Today, it's just the opposite. Because of Walmart and Home Depot and Lowe's and all the other box stores up there, everyone's coming over from Lewiston now. So that's what's making this a major lottery in town. So right now, we have 30-plus accidents occurring yearly out there. If you add more traffic onto Turner Street at all, you're just going to increase that problem. There are other properties on this street that are going to get developed over the next handful of years. So they're already going to be adding additions by, you know, taking a large house and turning it into a four or six-bedroom house or something like that. So if you, if you allow them to cut a curb, my feeling is, on Turner Street, if you don't make it go out on Summer Street, you're already adding an undue burden to the street and you're you're actually reducing future development on the street too, or you're increasing the problem that's going to occur as time goes on. While I understand Rose Street there is not an ideal street, if you do go onto Summer Street, you have several streets to go off in both directions. So it breaks that traffic flow up. It also is a much, much less traveled street, so it's easy to turn on to and off from. I I actually don't think that any of the traffic should go out on Turner Street. And I know there's only a 15-foot space there, but, you know, I've been in other places, condos and things like that, that have similar spaces. And what they do is they put up a mirror and they put up, they they make other alterations. So that space is actually big enough to go into and park him back there and still drive out. And not all the traffic is going to go back there anyway. And then ultimately, the last thing to say is, and again, if you keep this is down to the eight more units, you really don't have any issues anyway. They're asking for an allowance, an allowance that was made 40, 50 years ago, and they're asking to add to that allowance. Now, I know you want to use the building, but if you made bigger units, maybe a few more people would be there, but there'd be less cars. Overall, there would probably be less, actually, might be even less kids there if they were bigger units. I don't know, there might be more kids. And lastly, I'll tell you a very quick little story. You know, I I have a duplex up in Augusta. And in 1980, I had a contractor come and he looks at it, he goes, "Wow, it's a big unit, you ought to turn it into six units." And I said, "Well, you know, I've checked, I could do it." But you know, or four units. But I really didn't have the extra parking, so I'd have been pushing all this off onto my neighbors. I would have had, they would have had to park some of them on the street, they would have had to do this, they would have had to do that. It would have put more people in the neighborhood, more, more density to my neighbors. That's what these people are doing to us. I mean, you don't have enough green space there now to meet the real requirements. So where are they going to get it from? They're going to basically absorb it out of their neighbors. Because that's, the people still need space. So I guess what I'm saying is, if if we don't cut any curb and we somehow have a traffic flow coming out onto Summer Street, you've eliminated a lot of problems. And secondly, if you do keep it down to the eight, just the eight bare units in that unit, in that building, you you're still within compliance of the plan. And isn't that what it's really all about? And like I said, you know, 30 plus, to me, 30-plus accidents in that short section of Turner Street, not the whole Turner Street, just that short section, is unacceptable. So more traffic on, you know, especially people coming in and going out, that's, it's unacceptable. So, and you're retarding future development in the area because these other places are going to, you know, some of these other places are going to want to take their big houses and probably turn them into two or three or four-unit places. That's all I got, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the?
I did want to mention about the letters that went out. I myself at 369 Turner Street, I did not actually receive a letter from them. I received notification from my neighbor Jean next door. She actually showed me the letter. I was actually one of them that called and spoke to them about it. But if I had not talked to my neighbor about that, I would have never been notified about that. So I know Daniel asked what the, how many people got these letters and the geographical areas that the letters went out. I don't know how big that was, but I'm saying I'm pretty much directly across the street and I did not actually receive a letter. I just heard about it and that's, I wanted to make that mention as well.
Thank you.
Again, Bill Horton, 401 Turner Street. So you guys had talked a little bit about how to shield this parking lot. I'd like to see both. I'd like to see, see a nice high cedar fence and then plant, plants that will mature over time to where the, when the fence 10 years from now needs to be taken down and doesn't need to be replaced, that you've got vegetation there that hides this parking lot. And so a combination of both because there, at the end of the day, no one's going to go out and buy a six or seven-foot-high tree and plant them close enough to create a fence. And so what you do is you, you buy, you go to Home Depot and you buy the $25 plants and you plant them and you wait 10 years for them to turn into a fence. And so start with a wooden fence, plant some trees in front of them. When the fence rots out, then now you've got a natural hedge. Because I don't want to wait 25 years to not see the cars. Because they'll meet the compliance of planting the little trees and we'll all have to wait for the fence to grow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
Still moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second on my left. All those in favor? Yes. I'll accept the motion to reopen the public input section of the hearing.
I'll make that motion because we did mention that if they wanted to come out.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
I mean, I would just like to address their concerns. They are asking to increase the green space, which we are doing. I mean, there is actually more green space than there was. And it's more green space than a lot of the properties in this area. I mean, unfortunately, it is, it is more than a lot of the areas. Talking about how much everybody loves the nursing home being there, there was 97 signatures against putting the nursing home in there. There, if we, you know, have less units, they're just going to have more bedrooms because you still have, once again, 12,000 square feet. So now, instead of three bedrooms, you may have four or five bedrooms. This, yes, this is a business for us, but it is an investment. I mean, obviously, you know, if we buy the property and it deteriorates, we're not going to get our investment back. So it is an investment, just like their houses are. There was always an entrance on Turner Street. I'm not really sure where the confusion came that, we, that was never added after the fact. It was always there. You know, these are national, yes, these are estimates on what the traffic will be, but they're based on the national averages and, you know, there's obviously people that are going to be more, people that are going to be less. I mean, that's just an average. We did talk to the city about having a right turn onto Turner Street only, you know, to help some of the traffic so people aren't trying to turn left crossing the other lane. The crosswalk on Dennison is not that much further than walking back the other direction to Rose Street where they're suggesting putting another crosswalk. There's a crosswalk, there's crossing guards there every morning for the kids to cross the street. You know, I have no, we have no problems with the fence, you know, like I said, we just thought the trees would be better because of not looking like a fortress. So I don't think that, you know, that's, we have no problem with the fence or the trees, whichever they prefer, but we just, we thought the fence would look like a fortress and we were trying to avoid the fortress look.
Compound.
Yeah, like a compound. We didn't want to create that in front of their house. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Craig Woodard, 393 Turner Street. Just to be absolutely clear, the two driveways that are always there on Turner Street were single-car driveways. The nursing home, all that, the infrastructure that was back there, it never came out on Turner Street. So now they're asking to bring all of that back out onto Turner Street.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
Make a motion to close the public input.
Is a motion, is there a second? Second on my right, all those in favor? All right, the public input section is closed. So I think what we have here is a, a difficult decision to be made, one in which we have to balance several competing factors, some of them incongruent with each other. With regard to the neighborhood, I think it will be important that the planning board consider the plantings being proposed and the screening being proposed so that it does that, provides screening. Again, I, I, I love the maple trees, I think they would be beautiful. But they won't serve the purpose of screening very well. The, the other concern, obviously, that the, the planning board needs to take up is the idea of green space. The applicant is certainly making an effort because they are increasing green space. But that does not prohibit the planning board from proposing solutions that would further increase the green space. That leads me to discussion of density. I think it would be reasonable for the planning board to develop solutions that would bring the density more in line with the comprehensive plan. However, I would offer the following thought. This building was a dying building. There was a blighted home that has now been removed. It is important that when we are thinking about the reduction in units, that we also recognize that these improvements to the property and quite frankly, removing that, that, that home, the outside is a wreck, these are improvements to the property. We need to balance that and recognize that those are being done through private investment and that this is not a block grant, this is not an Auburn Housing Authority, we're not funding this through tax credits as we do some of these larger projects. This is being funded solely by private investment in that in order for that private investment to move forward, it needs to make sense as an investment. So I think we heard several numbers in terms of reduction, but I think it will be imperative as we talk about what kind of numbers we want to see here, that we recognize it is possible for us to kill this project by making it not economically viable, at which point the building sits and essentially becomes a blighted property in what we've heard is a very nice residential area. So I think we need to, it's imperative that we balance the concerns of the neighbors in making sure that we maintain the feel of not living like you're next to a parking lot while still incentivizing rehabbing of the property. So that's my two cents. I'm going to step back. I think it will be important for the board, at the juncture of the board at this point, to discuss the solutions that they think are viable, so. Looks like Mr. Scoggins would like to speak.
I agree on screening, I think it should be, I think although maples or other hardwoods is novel, I think that really it should be evergreens or variety, something like that. A fence should be erected in the meantime to allow those trees to mature. I think that makes a lot of sense, both for the proposed tenants of these buildings and any butters. I see that there's a proposed fence on the sides. It would make sense to put a fence across the front. In terms of green space, a lot of the neighborhood is served pretty well by the parks. There is a very large park complex that runs through that neighborhood. My family, myself, take advantage of that because we have no green space on our property. I'm less concerned about that than I am ensuring that the proposed project is in keeping with the rest of the nature on Summer Street. However, as Mr. Seera pointed out, this is a unique parcel. When you go down Summer Street, it just kind of pops up and is immediately out of place. I understand the need to, to balance those two competing things. On the one hand, making the, the project economically viable. I do kind of disagree a little bit with the assertion that the applicant made a number of times that they would just make the units much larger. That seems like a really poor and uncreative way of using that space. There are other ways to make money, it's on rentals, and as I'm sure they're well aware, but adding, making a four or a five-bedroom apartment, you're just asking for problems. And I would also, in that kind of flip side of that, another one of the public comments, someone mentioned that there would be less cars. That's not the case. I live next to two units or two-bedroom units and then three-bedroom units. The three-bedroom units, you're looking at multi-generational, you're looking at four cars a unit. You want the smaller units. It's a balance. So please understand that when we're making our decision up here.
Mr. Carrier?
I'm happy with the, what they have come back with. I don't have as much problem with the cut on Turner Street. We are giving up too, and yes, there will be more traffic through that location. But at this point, we're talking about an issue for the city more than an issue for the residents. The residents expect to have safe streets to drive on and the reliance of that falls back our police department and enforcing the laws that we have. If people are driving 45 miles an hour or slower, between 35 and 45 mile an hour on Turner Street, which they have been doing, have been in the area for 32 years, the speed just keeps going up and up and up. That falls to the police department to handle, not the individual residents. I wouldn't expect folks that live there currently to be out there, you know, slowing people up, even though you'd like to a lot of times. So I'm not as concerned with that. I am a little bit concerned with the, the green space. We have granted exceptions to that in the past. I do realize the school is one block in one direction and Pettingill Park is a block in the other direction, so a little less worried about that. And the green space coverage onto Turner Street, the only thing that I would say is we also have to remember the change in elevation with that, so as long as the plantings provide a block to that. It could be evergreens, it could be shorter trees. Think automatically of Bradford pears because they have a limited height. If you're looking at a Bradford, it's six foot, usually a trunk before you hit the things, and we are talking about a four-foot, four to six-foot change in elevation from street level to where their parking lot looks like it's going to be created in there. And the last thing is, I too have some concerns about the basement units. Really like to see some changes there, maybe a use of a different, maybe space there. From a fire department standpoint, I'm sure it's a, that would be a nightmare scenario of having to try to get down in there and have people have egress out.
Yeah, I also would like to mirror, you know, the other two members' thoughts. Do appreciate your input, do understand what you're in. I also appreciate as the developers, you know, immediately conceded, all but conceded the two basement apartments if they had to. They agreed to do a fence. I think them are both things that are positive. If you do delete the two basements, so now it went from 12 to 10, that does open up a couple parking spots for green space. And as, as the chair mentioned, they are doing this, yes, they're doing it as a business, but they are doing it on their own. It was up for auction, anybody could have bought it. They spent their money. They're going to spend more money to get this, so obviously, they do got to look at income. Yes, 12 was maxing in out, I'm sure. 10, to me, works. I do like the idea of the right turn out of Turner Street. I do like the idea of the right turn out of Turner Street. And again, like I said, the fence and the shrubbery or trees that would grow later on down the road once the fence was deteriorated.
I just want to second the comment about the basement units. I think that if we could remove those two, then from a safety perspective, it would be much improved. As somebody who's only five feet tall, I would find it really difficult to climb out of a window. I just want to make that comment, and unless there's other systems in place that would allow for an egress, that would allow for shorter people to access it, then I'm open to that conversation. But I think that having those two basement units removed would help a lot in terms of reducing the parking size or number of spaces. And then also having a fence on the Turner Street side, I'd like to see that actually set back, because if we're putting up a fence on a Turner Street with heavy traffic, we're going to be reducing visibility. So I'd like to talk about what that setback should look like and signage to ensure a right turn only on the inside of that fence as well.
Yeah, I'd like to make some recommendations, five to be exact. One, I'd like to decrease the number of apartments down to eight, no basement apartment at all. You can make your upper floors a little bit larger or whatever. I would take the maples out, I would put in a arborvitae type of screen, and then the gentleman said to put a fence on the backside. I would say that within a few years, that arborvitae would be high enough to hide all the cars. Crosswalk with flashing lights somewhere near there to get over to the school, I would recommend that. Down-facing lighting on short poles for out the parking lot, LED lights, using them up at Best Buy and a couple of the other places, you know, they're, they're very well, you know, very well lit areas, so it would work. And I would also put a stipulation in that there would be no increase of apartments for future years. There would be no more renovation to increase the number of apartments on this property. That's my recommendation.
I will speak to that last one, actually, because we would be approving the site plan including a specific number of units, we would, we would quite literally be locking in the number of units.
Very good.
They, to, to change the, the number of units would require...
An act of Congress?
Well, it would require coming back to the planning board.
Right. Good.
Yeah, my main concern, I want to echo the concern about the basement units. I think there are accessibility issues there that might be too much to overcome. And I think Planning Board member Boss actually stated very well about keeping, making sure you have visibility coming out of that right turn, doing right turn only, but making the green, the trees and the fence set back so that there's good visibility. Too often, we ignore that. Yeah, so.
Mr. Pepin, was there anything that you would like to add at this point?
Yeah, just the same, you know, reducing the units in the basement, I think is a good idea for safety, stuff like that, reducing the density, trying to get more green space, I think that'd be great. And the trees and the fence, I think on the Turner Street side, pretty important to the neighbors and everything, so, yeah.
Could you pull up that picture again?
Which one?
Looking directly at the empty lot from across the street, that one?
Oh, yes.
Because I think where the fence would be, the cars would be beyond that. A good point everybody said as far as visibility.
Oops.
Right there.
Mm-hmm.
So if the fence is going to set back at least the other side of the sidewalk, at least, you know, you'd get back there as far as you could and still do its job, so when you did pull out, you know, you're looking beyond the fence.
Yeah, I'd be, have to be back 25 feet.
And that should be sufficient.
Well, I've said, I've heard some, a few points of consensus from the board. There are some points made by individuals. The board at this time is going to have to decide whether we would like to discuss more to, to pin down some specific conditions, or if there's an individual that feels comfortable recognizing that they may be asked to do some friendly amendments. Because this is a complex project, whoever is making this motion will really need to follow the model, one of the models that was provided by staff, only because this is a little more complex than we would usually see. It's a little more complex than we would usually see, because we will need to make specific findings as to whether or not we believe the property meets the requirements of zoning and the comprehensive plan, and if the motion includes variances, justifications or findings as to why those variances are being granted. And if you look, Audrey did provide a very good sort of template that can be used, so.
Few different templates, actually.
Yes.
So before, before making a motion, let's do this. So just we're in consensus, I believe that we're in consensus, correct me if I'm wrong, of lowering the number of units from 12 to 10.
Eight.
We didn't have full consensus, and I think that that will impact the number of parking spaces as well, so I think further conversation about the units is required first.
And let's start there, I think that's going to be the most contentious one.
Right.
The...
The number of units.
The number of units.
Yeah, you're saying eight?
Eight.
Right.
And what are we hearing as, as we come back this way? I started the other end last time, but...
I agree that 10 would be appropriate.
Eight.
10 would suffice.
I, I would tend to agree, I think eight would be wonderful, but I'd, I'd like to leave room to make sure that it's a viable investment, so I think 10 seems reasonable.
And I agreed with 10.
10.
Yeah, I'm sort of torn between this, but again, I want to make sure that it's economically viable, like Mr. Seer pointed out.
So just to work clear, we're just talking about the one structure and the, the other three units on site are not being addressed.
Correct. So, yeah, to, to move forward with that, the board can have the option of saying, reduce the, the number of units to 10. We could suggest that they be the basement units, specifically because those seem to make the most sense.
Right.
Those are already, in my opinion, having seen this work done before, going to be incredibly expensive just because of cutting into the, into the, whatever the basement material happens to be, I, I hope it's concrete, right? And that being done...
A lot of them are brick.
Right.
Really easy to do. Right, just pop them.
And, and being done below grade, right? And so, so that discussion needs to happen about where people want the, the, do people care where the reduction is, or do we want to stipulate that?
Definitely basement here.
Yeah.
No basement.
No...
No basement.
Basement?
No basement.
Okay, I think we're in consensus there.
Yeah.
I think you were going to move on to...
Well, so I don't, I don't think we're in consensus about the number of units still.
Well, I don't necessarily think we have to be in full consensus on something in order to make a motion, and people can decide if they'd like to. There's nothing that says a motion has to pass unanimously, right? We're all allowed to...
Census building.
We're, we're all allowed to say no.
Did you read your packet?
We're all allowed to say no.
I was trying to.
Right. 10.
You're looking at me, I don't know, man.
Well, you, you had, you had a plan moving forward, you had some things you want to talk about, so...
That was the big one. That was the, that was the first one I want to talk about. So if we reduce to 10, I'm looking at the, looking at motion option B.
Is that the only thing that we want to do?
No, I think we should discuss that, the four parking spaces that can now be removed and where we'd like to see them removed, because there are three in the front...
Yes.
And there in the back, we can talk about the flow of traffic. Have we made a determination about whether or not we're going to allow the passage of cars in between the two buildings? I feel like there are a couple outstanding points.
I think reducing the two basement units reduces two parking spaces.
Okay, so where would we like to see those two removed?
I personally don't care. I have no, I have no stipulations about it. It would make sense to remove it if Audrey was saying that we need to have a 25 setback, 25 foot setback for the...
From any residential street for a parking complex.
Yeah, it makes sense to reduce the two parking lots, the two parking spaces closest to Turner.
Right.
Which would aid in snow removal as well.
Yes.
And it would give more green space for them.
Yeah.
Would also separate the parking lot, put the parking lot farther back, which might be, I know two, one space isn't a lot, but...
So one clarification for Summer Street that I think may be relevant to the impervious surface and the parking issue is currently the opening on Summer Street. Here is about 100 feet. It could easily be reduced by 50 feet and allow further landscaping to the front of these structures, which could potentially add 2,000 square feet. If you look, this is the current structure, the frontage here on Summer, as well as, oops...
Do you have this, Audrey? Do you have this as a...
No, I do not. But as you can see, the parking currently for the duplex is occurring here, so I'm, it is not counted currently in the parking numbers. This parking would also be in this area currently proposed, so these, these spaces are counted, but by providing, by narrowing this and increasing the landscaping through there, you could add about 2,000 square feet potentially of green space, reducing your, or increasing your impervious surface to around 30 percent. I mean, increasing your, uh, green space by 30 percent.
How, how large is a curb cut supposed to be? What's the standard?
50 feet is wide, but that allows for lots of egress and turn movements.
Sure.
So 100 feet is clearly...
Does it take anything to reduce the curb cut? If it's already there?
Well, it's, it's...
As far as the city's concerned?
No, no, we, we welcome reduced width in curb cuts. This kind of opening is just asking for trouble.
There was a picture where cars are parking along the side of this house, and there's sort of a jut out where it's closest to the, to the large building. So it would be possible to essentially add a small side yard where the cars in this picture are, I think. If you, do we understand I'm talking about the cars in front of the White House?
This is the duplex.
The duplex? Because there's no parking there.
I think that's what Audrey was saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying, but, well, we need to discuss where we'd put it, right? So, you know, we, we could just extend a sliver down here, and that wouldn't really give us much green space, but if we sort of do it on this side, it allows us, it allows for a, a small, a, a small side yard on the duplex, I think, which is probably be preferable for the...
This is the, that side right here that you're looking at.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to bet that the, the, the folks that are currently living there would much rather have a, a small side yard there than asphalt right up to their house.
And to be clear, that would then increase further beyond the 2,000 square feet.
For green space.
No, that would be, so essentially, in order to get to 2,000 square feet, you'd need two strips of 20 by 50, or, you know, so essentially, what, what that would be looking at is a area that comes in an owl on both sides.
So moving along, trying to again build consensus, I think we're also in consensus about having a stipulation that they construct a fence and that they have screening, evergreen in nature, not, okay, good. But then I, I liked Audrey's point, setting it back from the sidewalk. 10 feet?
We could put it up against the, where the parking will start, 25 feet back.
So 25 feet, great, 25.
Which would allow a car to pull out and see both ways.
Okay.
When you say fence, are you thinking six-foot stockade fence, chain link fence?
Oh, fantastic. Stockade, yeah, I think the idea is to screen.
Just on your clarification, thanks for the record.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Duvall and I were just speaking about the curb cuts, and I had made a drawing where we reduced that curb cut from both sides.
Yes.
Mr. Duvall suggested that it, it might be prudent to extend it only from the side, reduce it, how would I say this? So only reduce the curb cut on the side closest to the duplex.
So the north, the north side of Summer?
Right, so the north side of that curb cut, and that would provide as a maximum side yard for that duplex as opposed to reducing the curb cut on both sides. And so I throw that out. I know it was your idea, but it seemed like, I want to make sure it got out there. That was a good one, I thought.
So I have total number of units, removing two parking spots on the Turner Street side, reducing curb cut on Summer Street on the north side to 50 feet. 25 foot setback for stockade fence and evergreen screening on Turner Street. Anything else?
Would you say on the turn on Turner, right only, right?
I, personally, I like that idea.
I, I like the right only.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else?
Did you want to address lighting at all?
Oh, that's a good question. Well, here's a question. What is the minimum height, excuse me, for a light post that could be used for this purpose?
That's a good, good question. Probably 10 feet.
10? What? You think that's still a little high? I mean, that's, you know, we're talking about the top of the...
Probably go eight to 10 feet, but you do have some trucks that are fairly tall. But eight to 10 feet with downcast motion sensor, probably if you are focusing the lighting in just the central portion of the lot, you could have one pole and essentially encompass that parking area.
I was just thinking the same thing. We could, we could probably make that a single, a single light post if it was more centrally located along the...
Centrally located in the parking area.
North side of the, the parking area with a minimum, minimum required height. And downcast, so downcast, so cutoff lighting.
Cut off and motion sensor.
You don't want to shine into the neighbor's, you know, bedroom window type thing.
Again, so it's downcast.
So that's why I recommended the downturn type lights.
Yeah, so that would be like a full cutoff, so when we call, when we say full cutoff, those are the lights that are pointing straight down.
Right.
And we can stipulate, it might even be prudent to stipulate that it be a full cutoff with the lighting fixture only illuminate the, the south side, so that there'd be no light fixture on the north side of that pole, so that you're not, even though it's cutoff, you're not going down on the...
Can we go back to the fence on Turner Street? Is, putting the fence back 25 feet with the setback puts it right up past the house. It'll have to, it'll have to die into the side of the house and then continue on the other side or go around it. Isn't that sort of like reducing the green space for like the children playing and things like that, if we set the fence back further, you know? So again, the green space does two things. One part is, you know, for recreation, but another part is to reduce impervious service. They're going to have an exit point through the Turner Street curb cut to get onto that front yard area, if, if that is, but, I mean, again, honestly, knowing, living in the area, knowing the street pretty well, you don't see kids playing in the yard, they go to the, they go to the playground, they go to, they go to Pettingill.
And so, and when we do that, one of the things when we reduce green space on these projects, it is very much about runoff, but in terms of the, in terms of the recreation piece, one of the things we always look at are possible opportunities within close proximity. So I could think of the most recent market rate housing actually went up sort of behind the mall, and we made a determination that we, we were willing to reduce green space because they were close to the softball field, so, so it's a concern, but as, as Mr. Scoggins points out, one of the, one of the major concerns when it comes to green space is actually really about the impervious service, so. Well, someone from the audience would like to speak, so the board is going to have to decide if that's something that they'd like to allow at this point.
So late.
Is, is there, and I'll, I'll take a straw poll, do, would we like to open up to continued public input?
Nope.
All those, all those in favor, to, all those against opening it up at this point? Okay. Abstention? I understand, no one wants to make the, I apologize.
It's not in reference to me, it's in reference to the woman who was last time about...
I understand, no one wants to make the, um, I apologize.
It's not in reference to me, it's in reference to the woman who was last time about service road. She also wanted a fence, because she talked about people walking through her property. That was my comment.
Oh, yes, to the rear, to the rear of the, yes.
Oh, yes, she, yes, you're right.
Yeah, the newest one has a fence going around the entire thing.
But probably there is a fence, right?
Is there?
Actually, there's, there's a fence showing on the.
Yeah.
There is a fence showing on the site plan, so.
Is there anything else?
Identified new fence.
You only need to put a fence on two sides, so.
Right, well, well, there's an additional fence at the back that needs to be put there, but it's already shown on the plans, so it was something that was discussed last.
I think it's already, it's already, yeah.
All right, if you're ready, Mr. Scotten, it sounds like you were gearing up for.
Load your barrels.
All right, okay, here we go. Make a motion to approve the conversion of an approximately twelve thousand square foot former nursing home to a no greater than thirteen units. Is that correct? Because it's thirteen units total, or do I need to say that it's ten units?
No, thirteen's total.
Just the building.
No, it's thirteen total because it's a subdivision of the entire lot.
It's a subdivision.
We have to address all the units.
All three, all, all units on the property.
Yes, okay.
Wait, all units on the property are twelve thousand square feet?
No.
Total? Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to strike the bit about how many square feet.
Gotcha.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the conversion of, of a former nursing home to thirteen total units at one eighty-five Summer Street in the multifamily urban zoning district.
That's not right. The nursing home is one building, that's building number one.
So perhaps say property. Okay, third time's the charm here. Make a motion to approve the conversion of a property of, to thirteen total units at one eighty-five Summer Street in the multi-family urban zoning district, and further grant a variance to green space requirements to allow lot coverage of, is that still accurate? Seventy-seven percent impervious space, surface?
Um, it's the, to allow lot coverage of, yeah, whatever the seventy, if you're wanting the twenty-three percent green space, then it would be seventy-seven.
Allow lot coverage of seventy.
Whoa, whoa, but we just, we increased the green space. We increased it.
Thirty percent, right?
Yeah.
Thirty percent, yeah, so you could say with thirty percent green space or seventy percent lot, uh, impervious surface.
Okay. Green space requirements to allow lot coverage of seventy percent impervious surface, and further find that the proposed project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, land use plan per section sixty dash one, thirteen sixty-five with the following findings and conditions. Due to settling associated with the recently demolished nursing home facility, the applicant may use temporary pavement in the parking lot until summer of twenty twenty-one. A conditional certificate of occupancy shall be issued, contingent upon final pavement being installed in accordance with section sixty dash six oh seven of the city code of ordinance. In addition, the applicant will remove two parking spots at, on the Turner Street side of their project. They will reduce curb cut on Summer Street to fifty feet total on the north side. They will have a twenty-five foot setback for stockade fence and evergreen screening on the Turner Street side. They will create a right turn only onto Turner Street. They'll have a ten-foot downcast lighting for parking area with motion sensors centrally located with full cutoff lighting only illuminating the south side of the property.
Um, may I add?
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
I'm open.
That with regard to the curb cut, that the green space to the south of the duplex be increased to meet the thirty percent requirement.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
I'm checking it.
There's a motion and there's a second, is there any discussion amongst the board?
Do we need to specify that it not have basement apartments?
Yes.
Yeah, someone needs to make that friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment stating that.
Accepted?
Accepted.
Is it acceptable to the second?
It is.
Okay. So that reduction is specific to the basement. Discussion?
Friendly amendment about the right-hand turn traffic?
You got it.
You got it? Okay.
Discussion? Discussion? Well, it would be difficult to require the applicant to put a crosswalk on a municipal street that is not adjacent to there. That's the, that's the issue there. Talk to your city councillor.
I tried. Yeah, but it's wrong ward.
Discussion. At this time, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, all those against. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys very much. Before we are able to move on to item five, the planning board policies and procedures clearly state that no new item will be taken after nine o'clock unless agreed upon unanimously by the members of the board. So, before we decide whether we'd like to do this, I would ask, Audrey, is item number five of, is there a time constraint on item number five?
Yes, there is a time constraint. We do have a purchaser for the church, St. Louis Church, and they would like a confirmation by the planning board that in fact, the St. Louis Church would be designated as a building of community significance for the purposes of adaptive reuse application before confirming purchase.
Having heard that, our options are to extend the meeting and ha, or ha, hold a special meeting. I think since we are here, it makes sense to take up the item now, however, that requires a unanimous vote of, vote of the board. So, um, you are able to vote because this concerns policy, not a public hearing. All those in favor of taking up an additional item on the meeting?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
Good.
None being, will take up the item. Item number five is a public hearing to request a determination that thirty-two Dunn Street, the St. Louis Church, be designated as a building of community significance for the purposes of an adaptive reuse development application. We'll follow the same procedure that we followed for the previous public hearing. So is there a staff report that has been prepared?
So the only item that you have in your packets for this one is the staff memo, there wasn't a formal application. It's before the planning board for a determination, like Audrey said, that the St. Louis Church be designated as a building of community significance. You'll notice under the special exception section of the city ordinance for each zoning district, it lists what is actually called an adaptive reuse of a building of community significance. So this essentially grants the planning board the ability to help preserve a structure that you determine to be one of community significance and allow the structure to be used for one or more purposes that are not otherwise permitted in the underlying zoning district. As you probably know, the city owns the church, and we've been approached by a prospective buyer who's interested in using the building in a few different ways. Some of the ways that have been mentioned are a church, a leasable office space, community center, possibly an art gallery, bookshop, and/or a cafe. In your memo, we've provided a breakdown of uses that are allowed in the multifamily urban district, similar that are to those that are proposed by the prospective buyer or thought about by the buyer, they're not formally proposed yet. And we also broke down the performance standards for each of the uses, and the primary ones really being off-street parking. The performance standard discussion at this point, while it's good background information for the board, it's not really crucial without knowing the exact uses that are proposed and the hours of operations and those sorts of things. So having said that, city staff really supports the planning board determining this structure as one of community significance. I think this structure was the reason why the adaptive reuse special exception standard was created. It's also in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which calls for high-density neighborhood conservation, and it essentially encourages reinvestment in existing structures and densities. So we recommend that the board motion that the St. Louis Church be a building of community significance, which will then allow an applicant to come forward with an application as an adaptive reuse of a structure of community significance.
Thank you very much. I'm quite a stickler about this. I appreciate the history, but it's important for members of the board to know that the adaptive reuse was developed because the city of Auburn has several properties like this, and that it is not, um, the board's business to develop ordinances specific to a singular, singular property. And I apologize, but I'm always a stickler for it, uh, for, for sort of pointing those things out. There are criteria for what a property of community significance, how it is described, and it's in the definition. And are you guys able to bring that definition up?
Yes, and the uses proposed are, all meet the criteria.
Okay. Look, I'm going to make a plug for the building, all right? First communion confirmation, I grew up in New Auburn, it was an incredibly important building for that part of town. And in fact, I think the mere fact that the city of Auburn is developing, is developing a specific monument just to house the bells that came from this church ought to point out how important this building was, not just to folks like me who grew up in that neighborhood, but how important it was to the, to the entire city. To add to that, those bells are special bells, those bells were made during World War One and shipped over. You don't, you don't, you don't find those every day, they weren't sort of made on a, any given Sunday, they were made at a very particular time and during a very important event. And they also represent what was, um, the, uh, one of the, an introduction of a group of individuals who play a big part in local history. We know that the area was originally settled by Irish and English immigrants. We know that the French came later, and we often think of the French coming in the forties and fifties because we think of, of family members or people that you know, but as it turns out, they were coming much earlier, and this church represents one of those first churches that that community built. And so, that's my plug.
I'm fully in support of the adaptive reuse proposed, not that we have specifics, but I would have to agree with your comments, and I think it's a great example of a good project that supports preserving local history.
I agree completely.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Definitely, yeah.
Yes.
In that case, I'd be looking for a motion to make a determination that this property does meet the, the requirements for an adaptive reuse.
I make a motion to determine the St. Louis Church, located at thirty-two Dunn Street in the multifamily urban zoning district, to be a building of community significance for the purposes of an adaptive reuse application pursuant to chapter sixty, article sixteen, division three, section thirty, section sixty thirteen thirty-five of the Auburn Code of Ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. As I understand it, there were some particularly important items coming up in October that Audrey wanted to inform us of. How, how quickly will that happen?
Really quick, I'm going to, I'm going to make it really quick.
All right, so, uh, motion, all those in favor of sending the meeting to take up, the upcoming items for October prior to the public comment. So we're going to have to do public comment.
This is going to be a five-minute thing or five hours?
Audrey says five minutes, thanks. So all those in favor?
Better not ask questions.
Five minutes.
Mr. Piven? Yes, no? Okay, all right, Audrey, yes?
Mr. Seer, you didn't give us a public speech there on the church. You just switched it.
Oh, I apologize.
This is why we don't do things after nine.
This is why we don't things, do things after nine. Mr. Walker is absolutely correct. Because of that, I think that our vote would be in question, so we will have to back up to the public hearing regarding the church and open up the public input section of the meeting.
Larry Pelletier, one twenty-nine Second Street. I'm just up here hoping that you will vote in favor of this. And as you already mentioned, Mr. Seer, this, this billing, particular billing is very important to a lot of community members, and as I've, as you've heard, the, the tower is soon to be erected, I think, October?
November second.
November second, standing corrected. And that, that would be the catalyst of this whole project that's going on in, in New Auburn. And if it wasn't for, for the church, we wouldn't have been able to save the bells, which we almost didn't accomplish. And so, it's very important to a lot, a lot of people.
Thank you. We'll close the public input section. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, I don't know if that'll even make a difference now, but.
Need to revoke, re-motion, how would you?
I, I think it would be appropriate, since you read the motion out loud, that you say that, that you will make the motion as previously read.
I will make the motion as previously read.
Is there a second for Mr. Carrier? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. We also said we would extend the meeting to hear brief items coming up for October.
There's only three minutes left, we're five minutes. Okay, so, I'm going to sit around the handouts. One is the draft agricultural committee language to put together the ag committee authority that will be looking at, yeah, adopting this language. So it will be at the next meeting in October, where we will be asking for a formal recommendation to the city council regarding the composition, construct, and nature of the ag committee being proposed. Second, this is just a reminder of what was put forward in terms of the planning board's recommendations for the mayor's amendment, the mayor's city amendment to the agricultural district. Because we have so many new members who are unfamiliar with what, for, I think, that you be aware of. A lot of that information is available on the ag portal, which is on the website. Next item, in front of the council workshop, September sixteen, we are going to introduce a workshop forum to city council commercial solar installation discussion, this is something from the August meeting.
What date is that?
It's Monday, September sixteen.
It's Monday.
You said it again, please.
Next Monday.
Do what? The workshop item commercial solar installation discussion, we have a lot of interest in developing solar installations in the city right now. It's only allowed in the industrial zone, and there are new standards that have been adopted and brought this up at the August thirteenth meeting. And we are bringing it up for just as a discussion item in workshops, so that the city council has a chance to be both aware of it and then give us recommendations regarding what they'd be interested in and us pursuing. Last but not least, we have a rezoning coming before the planning board in October for nine sixty-five Minot Avenue, Petros, from some, some land in suburban residential to GB two.
Did you say Minot Ave?
Yes, Minot Ave, where Petros is. To the rear of that, there's suburban residential rezoned land that they are rezoning, they're requesting a rezoning for some acreage to GB two for extension. We also may be having an application coming forward in October or November for a River Road apartment complex on the north area. So I wanted to make you aware that there are a number of items. We also have received a, a high number of applications that may be coming forward, as well as the, the Broad Street apartments. They've come in with a, a proposal that would be built out to phase three, to show additional apartment buildings there as well. So that might be coming forward.
As, as the person running the meeting, I'm amending miscellaneous A to include miscellaneous B, so we don't have to vote again to see if we want to hear from everybody. Does anybody have something that they would like to share with the? We all heard at the meeting that I'll be presenting our findings at, to city council, and I've been asked to specifically just share those findings, and it's not supposed to be a discussion about opinions and so on and so forth, so. Next, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment?
The only comment is you guys talk too fast, you can't hear any of your thing.
Okay.
You just, we didn't get.
I apologize. What I was saying is that we, that I will be, that I've been asked to present the findings that, a recommendation with regard to the, the ag zone text amendment, and that I've been asked. and that I've been asked just to present them in person, but that it's not supposed to be a discussion on sort of opinions and so on and so forth. I'm really there just to share what the board had to say specifically in their recommendation. Public... Public comment, none? Okay.
I motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I'll bring my sleeping bag next time.